All right. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, everybody, for being here. We're going to kick off our scheduled 6:00 p.m. public hearing. Mr. Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, the item before you is the, our scheduled public hearing. I believe you've got the script. I think you started. I believe I follow you.
Okay, this is the second and final of the required public hearings in the Leon County Budget for Fiscal Year 2526. If you wish to speak in person, please complete a speaker's card and turn it into the clerk. Citizens registered to speak in person or provide virtual comments will be asked to speak prior to the commission taking votes on the millage rates and budget. Now, the county administrator, Vincent Long, will read the millage rate into the public record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed aggregate millage rate for Leon County, Florida, is 9.0644 mils, which is a 3.4% increase over the aggregate rolled-back millage rate of 8.7615 mils. Advalorem revenues will increase due to an upturn in property values. This increase will be used to support sustaining a quality level of essential services countywide. Commissioners, you've been provided all the necessary guidance during the development of the tentative budget, and all the directions provided in the various agendas and workshops during the budget process have been incorporated into the 2026 final budget. Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
At this time, the individuals that are appearing in person and virtually are allowed to speak. Mr. County Administrator, do we have any citizens that wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we have no speakers on this item.
All right. Florida statutes require the Board to address the millage rate before addressing each budget. The Board must vote on each millage rate and budget separately. I will now entertain motions. Yes, sir?
I'd like to declare a conflict on, because I am president of...
Can we move option one first? Is that cool?
Yes.
I think your motion...
I move option one.
Okay, perfect. We got a motion and a second for option one. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of option one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Passes six to one with Commissioner Caban in, what's the word?
Opposition.
Opposition. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to declare a conflict.
Yes, sir.
We moved option number two without the CHSP homeless category funding. I am very proud as a Big Ben CEO.
Okay.
For such reason, I have to recuse myself from that piece of it.
All right. Thank you. We've got a motion for option number two excluding the line item for CHSP funding, seconded by Commissioner Miners. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Passes unanimously. We are now on option number two with, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we have to adopt the line item funding for the CHSP homeless service category in the general fund budget minus Commissioner Miners' Maddox's recusal.
I'll move the line item itself.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sorry. We have a motion for the line item, seconded from Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Passes six zero with Commissioner Maddox recused. We are now looking for option number three. Commissioners?
I move option three.
Okay, we've got a motion for option number three. Is there a second?
I second Mr. Chief.
Second about Commissioner Cummings. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of option number three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Passes unanimously. We're now on option number four.
Option four.
We've got a motion for option four from Commissioner Maddox. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Caban. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners, and to the public for participating in this second public hearing on the budget. Mr. Administrator, I think we're on item, on general business now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item, let me just see what we've got. Item number two on the agenda, your only general business item tonight. Commissioners, you may recall, the Board requested that you continue your discussion on this item, which was previously on your agenda. It is the consideration of potential charter amendment topics to advance to the Leon County Charter Review Committee and amended bylaws. Very quickly, Commissioners, in terms of an overview, as you requested at your July 8 meeting, the item provides a legal analysis on issues proposed by the Board to determine whether to advance for consideration to the Leon County Citizen Charter Committee. The item also provides additional information on the CCRC's bylaws as amended by the Board at your September 15 meeting. As you may recall, Commissioners, at your last meeting, the Board amended the CCRC's bylaws to lower the voting threshold for the committee to advance proposed charter amendments to public hearing and final transmittal to the Board. There was discussion by Commissioners about the CCRC having the same voting threshold as the Board to recommend charter amendments, and the Board amended the bylaws to reduce the voting threshold from a two-thirds supermajority to a simple majority vote for the final transmittal of proposed charter amendments following the committee's three public hearings. Commissioners, however, as detailed in the item, we just wanted to point out that maintaining the two-thirds majority threshold is something that we wanted to elevate, again, to the Board's attention to ensure that that is indeed the direction that you would like us to follow, because the two-thirds voting threshold is required for the Board on board-initiated amendments to advance those charter amendments. If the Board simply does not wish to do that, you wish to allow the existing direction to stand, to make it a simple majority voting threshold for both of those, you don't have to do anything. That's the way it is reflected in the attachment before you. But we did want to provide the option for the Board to, again, revise the bylaws to require the two-thirds vote for advancing proposed charter amendments to the Board of County Commissioners, again, for your consideration. If that's not something you wish to do, then the current bylaws that are attached as amended reflect that previous direction. So with that, Commissioners, we're happy to answer any questions you might have, and we do not have any speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioners, can we bifurcate these and sort of deal with the seven Commissioner ideas and then go to the...
I can do a motion here.
Oh, wait. You say you want to deal with the seven Commissioners first?
If that's okay, or do you want to deal with the two-thirds part?
Do we deal with the two-thirds part first? I think it's going to be easier.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we make it mandatory that a simple majority be the standard to go to public hearing, but second out of public hearing, that a two-thirds vote be the standard?
Okay, say that again for me. I'm sorry.
So, in order for an option to make it to public hearing out of the CRC, it needs to be a simple majority. In order for it to make it out of that public hearing into us, it needs to be a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
You understand that?
Yes, sir. That's option two?
Option two.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Commissioner Proctor, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we not support that, that we keep this simple, simple majority, simple majority, simple majority. You know, in our community, we have different rates and methodologies for fire fees and fire assessments and charges of fires. Some operating by one standard, flat, some have a mixed dynamic of whatever that is, and democracy should operate on one standard. And it's been my understanding all my life that the majority rules. I've learned more recently that it seems that the minority rules, and if we are doing democracy by way of flag pledge that we do every meeting, that we start off, if all civics that is taught to boys and girls, a majority, 50.1, puts each of us on this dais. To trick out the rules, to get different standards, meandering through, is trickology that the county is not noted for, and a trickology that we ought not to establish. I think that everybody, B-O-D-Y capital B, everybody ought to operate by the same rule and standard. And for me, all these years, most of my life, have been with a simple majority. And I think that for the lay citizen that we're calling here, it may insult their sense of democracy if they realize that what the majority thought isn't strong enough, but it takes a supermajority. That can be, that can be a dismain kind of encounter in reality. So I encourage that we not support Commissioner Maddox's motion and not offer a substitute motion that we have a simple majority for common laypeople, ourselves included, and that we keep it across in every stage of our encountering the public policy.
All right, we've got a substitute motion and a second from Commissioner Proctor. We are still in discussion. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're next, followed by Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Cummings, and Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. This is what we decided at the last meeting, with all the information that was given to us, and so now we're being asked to undo this. The reference in the materials to the county commission having a two-thirds threshold is not part of the eight-year process. That is the threshold for the other method where we just come up and say, hey, we want this year to do a referendum at the county commission originating it. The county commission needs a supermajority. That makes sense if we're just pulling it from the dais. This process is a citizen-led process set in the charter every eight years, and I disagree with setting a higher standard threshold for our citizens that we appointed than we do for the voters of all in Leon County. Let's walk this back from the end. In 2026, there'll be charter amendments on the ballot. They make it through the process, and all we expect of our citizens is 50% plus one to pass those amendments. If we trust them with that threshold, let's walk it back. Before that, it comes to our county commission, and we only need a simple majority to take what's been given to us by the Citizens Committee and put it on the ballot. If we trust ourselves, who have been put here by the voters with a simple majority, then we take it back to what's trying to be changed at the Citizens Committee. We are saying, thank you, 21 citizens who volunteer your time every other Thursday night for four months, but you have a higher threshold to suggest referendums than anyone else in this process, and that doesn't make sense to me. If our concern is that bad ideas are going to get on the ballot, this commission is where we stop those. This commission is where we decide. So for that reason, I will be supporting the substitute motion to stay where the bylaws are.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox?
I see things slightly different. I understand your logic, but the first level of, I guess, scrutiny that any charter amendment will go through will be at the Citizens Committee. And that Citizens Committee, like, if the motion passes that I put place forward, not the substitute motion, will have the first opportunity to get a simple majority to go to a public hearing. In order for it to make it to us, it would take a two-thirds vote. Well, you said it would take a, it would take a simple majority for us to put on the ballot. Well, why would that be? Well, I think that would be because it's been vetted by our citizens. Not once, but twice, and comes to us with a two-thirds vote, which lets us know that that citizens group feels strongly about what they've sent us. So, at that point, I agree with the fact that a simple majority from us, after it's gone through two initial hearing and a public hearing with a two-thirds vote, gives me comfort to push forward what our citizens have asked us to push forward on the ballot. Now, you said that it would take a two-thirds vote from us to place something that didn't go through that vetting process. That's why. Because it didn't go through the vetting process, it should take a two-thirds vote from us to make it to the next level. But because it has gone through the vetting process, and they have talked about it, discussed it, and came to us not with one vote of supermajority, but a second vote of a two-thirds vote under my, under my motion, it makes me very comfortable putting, pushing forward what, what those citizens have said, and makes me even more comfortable that once we put on the ballot, that we be able to tout it as, not only did it get a two-thirds vote from the citizens who vetted it twice, but a majority vote from your commission who believes in what those citizens have done. So, I won't be supporting the substitute motion, and I understand the logic that you say, but like I said, if it, if it's coming from us, it takes a two-third vote. I believe that if there were just one hearing, if there was no, no, no initial vote in a public hearing, but if there was just one sitting and one hearing to get it to us, then I would say that the, that the Citizens Committee would have to do a two-third vote as well. But given the fact, again, you get it, a simple majority, pushes it to a public hearing, and that public hearing gives us a two-third vote, then that makes me a little more comfortable, because they've had twice to vet it, and I know that supermajority of that, of that review committee enjoyed or liked what came to them. So I'm going to stick with my original motion and vote against the substitute motion for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the fact that we've got citizens that we can't, who've agreed to work on the Charter Review Committee. These are citizens that are going to be giving their, lending their time and talent to look at our charter and make recommendations to us. I don't want to saddle them unnecessarily. I feel like each of us have confidence in the individuals that we selected. We have confidence in their, their intelligence, their integrity, their, their ability to look at our charter and, you know, analyze it and look at what's best for the citizens, what's best for, for Leon County. I don't want to unduly burden them, and so I believe allowing the simple majority vote with that committee, we were talking about 21 people on the, on that committee, and I think we have to establish or at least demonstrate to them that we do have respect for them and respect for their, for their ability, and that even if it's, even if it is a majority vote of that committee, and once it goes to public hearing, I don't think we need to straddle them with two-thirds requirement. I think that majority vote should be consistent. I don't think we should confuse them with the level of approval in their committee from their committee members switching back and forth. So I will support, support the substitute motion, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I hear the arguments on both sides. I think there are strong points on either one, but I, I can't support the substitute motion. And the reason why is because I like the idea of having a majority vote for the CCRC to advance to public hearings. I think that debate is going to be extensive among the CCRC. I think that's a part of the process. I think it's a, it's a lower bar to bring an issue up for discussion and have it advanced to public hearings. But I think after that time, after deliberations have taken place, I think the bar should be higher. I think it should be a two-thirds majority for those policy items to come to us. As has been said many times already, both tonight and at the last meeting, we have a two-thirds majority bar in order to have something on the ballot on this dais. So I think it stands to reason that having that same threshold for the CCRC would make sense. I understand what, what everybody's saying, but we've got 21, I think, very competent, intelligent people. I don't think they'll be confused by having a majority vote first and then a two-thirds majority vote second. I think they'll understand that. But it actually puts more of the onus on them to debate the issues, to debate the merit of a policy idea, of a potential amendment. They have to do the work between the public hearing and when they recommend that amendment to us, to make sure that they get a two-thirds majority of that CCRC on board. I think that's a necessary step. So I'm going to vote against the substitute motion, and I will support the original motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Caban?
Good afternoon or good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I plan on supporting the substitute motion, and the reason for that is if an item goes to the CCRC and comes to us, then it's a simple majority. However, if it doesn't, if it's a commission discussion idea that we want to put on the ballot, it takes a supermajority. And so I like, in my opinion, I like the principle, the principle basis of us being able to put something on the ballot with a simple majority, and so...
I'm sorry. You said ask me to put something on the ballot.
Correct. So if something goes to the CCRC and they approve it, then we can put it on the ballot with a simple majority. It doesn't need a supermajority. And so...
You're already doing that.
No, so if it doesn't go to the CCRC and it comes from us, it needs a supermajority. And if it goes to them and comes up to us, then it's a simple majority.
I'm sorry.
I understand. Your motion on the floor, your motion is that it's a simple majority from us or them, no matter...
Correct. Okay.
So that's just the basis of my reasoning for supporting the substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Max, before we come back to you, I'm going to, I'm going to agree with you on this. I support the original motion. I cannot support the substitute motion. I think that, as articulated by Commissioner Max and Commissioner Minor, I think the bar should be high. I think it should be the same for us as them at two-thirds. So that's where I'm at on it. So we're still on the substitute motion. Commissioner Maddox, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that, I don't think we understand the gravity of what we're doing in what we're, what we're discussing. We're talking about the charter. We're not talking about a simple agenda item. We're not talking about a simple policy. We're talking about a charter that governs Leon County. Mr. Administrator, when was our charter created?
2000, 2000.
Has, has the bar ever been that low, meaning a simple majority from the commission and the CRC, in order to put something on the ballot for the charter to change?
The, the previous bylaws had both of these thresholds set at two-thirds.
So, so us discussing going to a simple majority to a two-thirds vote is really less than what the standard has been in the past, correct?
It's consistent with what, with what was done in the past. Again, and we also recognize that the Board's vote at the last meeting called for the simple majorities. This was, again, on our part, seeking clarification. It was late into the night. The Board decided to push this discussion. There was some conversation about consistency with the, we just wanted to say, just to be clear, let us articulate here again...
I voted in support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I voted in support of the motion last time because I took the word of my fellow commissioner and maybe understood what he was saying in that everything was a simple majority. The charter has governed us since 2000, and any change to our charter, just a change, just like a change to the Constitution, should require a higher level of scrutiny than a simple agenda item that we may be taking up here and there every month where we have this meeting. And so, yes, I, I think, I think you guys are minimizing what we're doing here in that it should take a two-thirds vote from us to put something on the, on the ballot. Why wouldn't it take a two-thirds vote? Without the scrutiny of our citizens, we're going to put something on the ballot without, without a two-thirds vote. To me, that's, that's crazy. This is, this is not, again, this is not an agenda item. This is the constitution, this is, this is our constitution that we're talking about. So a simple, I, I would caution every Commissioner up here to really think about what you're doing. It shouldn't be as easy as a simple majority to change the charter of our county. We're changing, we're talking about changing the charter of our county. What governs how we work, what we do, who we are in Leon County, we're talking about changing that, and y'all want to go to a simple majority across the Board? I can't support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner O'Keefe, then Minor, Cummings, and Proctor.
Thank you. I'd like to make sure that I'm understanding what we're voting on in the motion here is, this is specific to the bylaws of the Citizens Review Charter Committee.
Mr. Administrator, can you clarify, or Mr. Proctor, may I restate? Do you all understand the motion?
We do. I understood the motion to be what's before the Board, which are the CRC's bylaws. There are two voting thresholds. One of the voting thresholds was, again, previously, prior to the Board's most recent action, was a two-thirds majority vote for the CRC to hold a public hearing on an item. The Board at the last meeting, your direction was to lower that to a simple majority. The other part, the other place where there's a voting threshold is the voting threshold required by the CRC to recommend a charter amendment to the Board of County Commissioners, which was previously also a two-thirds vote, and the Board at the last meeting voted to similarly lower that to a simple majority. Again, we were seeking clarification on that, just clarification on that to ensure that that's indeed what the Board wanted to do. And again, so, so this, at least from a staff standpoint, what was before you was just addressing those two voting threshold issues that are in the bylaws that apply to the CRC.
Commissioner Proctor, is that as you understand your motion?
I'm so sorry. I was locked in the room with the original founders in Philadelphia in my head. I had journeyed away to 1787. I apologize. What was the conversation?
Can you repeat that? Commissioner Administrator, where we are right now with your motion, Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, the item before you was seeking clarification as to the bylaws and if the Board wished to make the, make it a simple majority vote, and to, and we were seeking clarification from the Board on one of those thresholds. That's the threshold that it, that it takes for the CRC to recommend a charter amendment to the Board of County Commissioners. In previous bylaws, that was a simple majority vote. At our last item, when we brought you to the bylaws, the Board suggested and directed that we lower that threshold from two-thirds or from, from two-thirds to a simple majority vote. And so we were, this item was simply seeking clarification that that is indeed what the Board wanted to do.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Administrator. I'm now confused.
Okay.
So you said it was previously a simple majority. Was it, did you mean it was previously a two-thirds?
Yes, I did mean it. It was previously a two-thirds majority. The Board lowered the threshold to a simple majority.
Correct. So, we previously, previous iterations of this organization had a two-thirds requirement for the CRC to elevate an issue to the Board.
Correct.
We lowered that, maybe inadvertently, maybe on purpose at the last meeting, to a simple majority.
Correct.
And now we are debating whether to maintain it as a simple majority or back to two-thirds.
That's right.
And that doesn't include when it comes to us, right?
When it comes to us, I think we still have a two-thirds.
That's not part of his motion. Or if it is, can we bifurcate it?
Okay.
Vote on us.
I don't know. I'm confused now. Commissioner O'Keefe, you had the floor, I think, so...
Thank you.
Do we, can I get clarification before we continue?
Sure. Yes.
All right, so Commissioner Proctor's motion is dealing only with the CRC's ability to elevate one to us at two-thirds versus a simple majority, correct?
That's correct.
No, sir. That's not what I said.
Okay.
No.
That's not correct.
My substitute motion is that we put a majority vote at all levels, that we're not superior, that it requires two-thirds for people to speak to us. I know we're the royalty of the county, but I'm trying to create a level playing field, one that is democracy. You call on me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can he, can he clarify now what you're asking?
I just told you what I, I just clarified what I said, what my motion was.
We're, we're not able to change our charter for that two-thirds process at this time.
Hold on a minute. Just let them clarify.
So the chart, if it's...
So the chart, if it's, so two different processes. Amendments that come through the CCRC are separate from amendments proposed by the Board of County Commissioners. If the board on its own, outside of the CCRC process, proposes an amendment, it takes a majority plus one vote to put that on the ballot.
That's in the charter, not in the bylaws.
And that's in the charter. That's something that this board can't change by voting today. It's actually written in the charter that way.
So a simple majority.
Okay. Majority plus one?
That's what I said. So my motion would be limited to what can occur today, and that would be a simple majority. And I'll discuss when Commissioner O'Keefe's time is up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Everybody, okay, Commissioner O'Keefe, then Commissioner Minor.
I'll use my words carefully because there's confusion landmines all over the field. I am supportive of keeping the citizen charter bylaw threshold as stands after our last meeting at 50% and not touching the other three methods of changing the charter. And I'm leaving it at that.
And are we clear that's what Commissioner Proctor is doing?
Yeah, Vip said we can't change it anyway from the...
Right, it's in the charter.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Commissioner Proctor, you talked about being back in 1787.
I was there.
About the founding fathers.
You know they wouldn't let me in the goddamn room. I was not in my mind. I would have been jailed.
That gave me a thought. And while you guys were talking, I did some quick Google searching. You know that Congress, in order to propose an amendment to the U.S. Constitution...
Yes.
...has to have a two-thirds vote, not in one chamber, but two chambers. You know that our state legislature, in order to put an amendment on the ballot for the state constitution, in both chambers, needs a 60% vote, not a simple majority. You know that there's another option for getting an amendment on the state constitution, and that's by ballot initiative with petitions. That also requires the public at the ballot box to approve an amendment by 60%. The county commission here, in order to have something on the ballot by ourselves, we need a two-thirds majority to put it on the ballot. So we're proposing with this amendment on the floor now to lower that threshold for the CCRC to a simple majority? You know, big policy ideas shouldn't be decided on small margins. And if you take a look at what the lessons of our founding fathers in 1787 gave us, who deliberated in Independence Hall for weeks on end about what the right way to govern this country was, one of the things they decided was that they needed a supermajority in order to get the process initiated to get an amendment on the U.S. Constitution. Shouldn't we take a lesson from them? Especially since we also have a precedent here in this county commission, in this CCRC bylaws, for having a two-thirds supermajority. So as Commissioner Maddox said, this is serious stuff. These are big potential policy changes to our constitution here in Leon County that we call the charter. I think the bar should be high. Big policy changes shouldn't be decided on small margins. I think we need to really think about this carefully before we vote on this substitute amendment. I'm voting no, and I hope everyone else will here too, and I hope you support the original motion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. And just for, I Googled ratification limits, which is 75% of the states have to ratify to get something on the...
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. You need a two-thirds majority in both the House and Senate to initiate the process.
Right, right.
And then, three-quarters of the state legislatures need to ratify.
All right, Commissioner Cummings.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. This motion on the floor, from what I hear, is directed primarily specifically to the CCRC. Am I correct? That committee, okay. We, the county commission or the final arbiter, they can make proposals to us after the public hearing. It comes to us for acceptance or not as far as going forward with the referendum. Am I correct? That threshold with us is still two-thirds majority, right? The motion on the floor does not address that, right? Only the committee, only the committee.
There's some confusion there, Commissioner Maddox.
That's what I need to make clear.
You need some clarification?
So if we propose something that does not come from them, it takes a two-thirds vote?
Right.
If it comes from them to us and it passes the public hearing, it takes a simple majority vote from us, not a two-thirds vote?
Has that always been the case?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that has always been the case.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So you're lowering the threshold for the CCRC to that level.
Oh, okay. All right. But the vote on the floor right now is basically just for the committee. It's not changing the commission's threshold.
Correct.
Correct?
I'm standing that if it comes from them, it's just a simple majority if it comes from them.
Right, right. Well, I'm comfortable with that fact that we are the final arbiters. I think it should be two-thirds majority because amending the bylaws is something serious. We don't get to do it every 10 years or so. I think it should have a higher threshold because we're talking about referendum. It's going beyond us to the citizenry, and I think we should feel strongly that what we are putting forward to be voted upon by the citizens would probably have a likelihood of passage. Perhaps not. But I think it would require us to really think strongly about what we want to advance as a referendum pursuant to our charter. And that is serious. It is very serious as we are talking about amending items in the charter. And I know we have several proposals here that we'll address, that we want that committee to look at. And those are serious as well. So I like the threshold that's already in place for the commission, and I don't have a problem with lowering it a tad for the CCRC so that they won't be saddled down. But we, I think we have to be serious and recognize that we are the final arbiter when it comes to us.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Caban, then Commissioner Maddox.
Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Cummings that we bring the, and give respect to the 21 people we've asked to serve. It strains my brain to understand why there has to be this over-leared, condensed need for intelligent people, all of them, extraordinary people, all of them, that we've got to have for our purposes to be totally convinced that they were serious and they've given this strenuous evaluation and arduous debate. And that we got to get all of these 21 intelligent people to a supermajority to speak to us with a policy recommendation. That, to me, is ludicrous. We're in the 12th most intelligent United States city, 47, 48 people with college degrees and super, super well-educated people we've assembled, and we need two-thirds of them to tell us something. The people talking to us are better educated than this board, cumulatively speaking. I think it's an insult to their intelligence. So I don't know if Commissioner Minor, it's, when you talk about voting, I teach constitutional law. And, you know, I'm always on edge when you start determining voting and stuff like that because the Constitution has been, the one you're talking about has been so jacked up from the get-go. So it takes a 15th Amendment in 1870 to let black men vote. It takes a 19th Amendment in 1920 to let women vote. It takes a 26th Amendment in 1970, '71 to let 18-year-olds who were dying in Vietnam to vote. So this Constitution is jaded. This Constitution, when you talk about voting, nothing worse than this Constitution. Its characterization of people who are citizens and those who are three-fifths for purposes of apportionment and voting, I don't want to hear about that, Rick. This Constitution ain't got no legitimacy to me with its respect universal to all people. We want to keep this, I want to keep this simple because the history for which, hell, I got elected and won by 12 votes. I sit here tonight because I won by 12. If it took two-thirds majority, I wouldn't be. If it took two-thirds majority, Curtis Richardson wouldn't be on the city commission. A simple majority. We just voted on $400 million. And I don't think that it required two-thirds of us, our supermajority, to pass $400 million budget. That right there is more important than what these citizens are going to talk about pertaining to this community. So if we didn't got a supermajority to spin up the entire, entire budget of a county don't require nothing but a simple, then the stuff they're going to be talking about ain't all of that. So I get really edgy because I teach the Constitution. That's what I do. And it's funky, and it needs to be simple. And for laypeople who are coming here to give us their time and parts of their mind, I'm willing to accept what the majority says. And then we get to duke it out among ourselves as professionals. And if we can get to whatever our threshold is, then that's that burden that we have as electors and sworn with our hands up in the air that we going to uphold this Constitution of the United States. So I encourage us to not complicate, but to allow it to simplify in a time where democracy, many are concerned with the First Amendment and so much more. And I think that as we simplify and allow for people's voices to be an input, inclusionary, and not set the bar that we are lording it over them to be exclusionary, then we keep people's faith in the process. We keep their faith in democracy. And maybe the next time, we can get others to volunteer if we don't frustrate hell out of them. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Caban and Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Proctor, what year were you first elected in Leon County?
96, by 12 votes.
12 votes. I was four years old. You know, the commissioners before us were all duly elected to serve the same community that we represent. And they established a charter based on where our community was at that time. That was 30 years ago. One person who was part of that process is sitting at this table saying this needs to change. And so I take some serious weight to that. And I say that because we're all sitting here in the same position that previous commissioners were before us. And so their thought process and jurisdiction is no different than we are currently today. The only thing that's changed is the community and the time. And Commissioner Minor, I think you make a very strong argument, and I actually, you had me thinking how you said it, because I think that was a very strong argument about having a supermajority in both bodies. However, I've seen the dark side of supermajorities here locally with the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency, where, you know, unelected staff will lock in projects and bylaws and overspend on budgets, conceal budgets, and limits our authority with a two-thirds vote. And so I like keeping the power in the people, which is the people that they represent, they elect to represent, which is us. And lastly, I want to say that by us putting something on the ballot, we're not changing the charter, we're not changing the Constitution. We are asking our constituency if they would like to change the charter. And so I don't think that it's our decision to say, hey, we're going to make it harder to ask our constituency. You know, we represent our community. I like the fact and I like the ability for us to be able to go ask our constituency, are you happy with the way the charter currently lies? And I will say, and I believe this is Madam Attorney, is it a simple majority by voters to pass a charter amendment? Or is it a supermajority?
It's a simple majority.
So 50%, plus one vote?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So it just, you know, that's, that further embodies my decision-making to support Commissioner Proctor's substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chair, may I address Commissioner Minor?
Of course.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor, about the constitutions and a bunch of amendments that were made to the Constitution. When those amendments made to the Constitution, what was the threshold to pass those amendments to the Constitution?
Chair? Yes, sir.
In order for the Congress to initiate the amendment process for the U.S. Constitution, they need two-thirds vote in both chambers, House and Senate, to start the process.
Was it a simple majority?
No.
So all those constitutional amendments that our nation needed as we grew as people went through the same process of needing that supermajority in both chambers?
That's correct.
I don't think there was a shortage of people who wanted to be on this CRC. There wasn't. So don't believe that there weren't people knocking our doors down, asking for the opportunity to be on this CRC. I don't believe that the folks who have been chosen to be on the CRC, I don't believe that majority of them will fight against the fact that it would take a two-thirds vote for them to get to the next level, for us to approve what they have done to go to a ballot. I don't believe that. I don't believe we're simply saying, we're simply asking our electorate, would they like their charter to be changed? What we're saying is that these are the things that we submit to you that we think may be good ideas, coming from a citizens committee approved by this commission, for your consideration to be changed as to the charter. It's not simply, oh, you know, we just going to throw these things forward and see what y'all think. No, it's our consent to say that we believe in these things, and that we're asking you, do you believe in these things that should be changed on the charter? Because by our vote, by our consensus vote, that we would like to see it on the ballot, we're saying that we would like to see it in our charter. That's the whole point of approving it. So there's a lot of words being thrown around, there's a lot of ideas and, you know, philosophies about what we're doing. But as I've been known to say, let's just call a spade a spade. This ain't just a simple process of, well, we just going to throw it out there and see what people say. No, we are actively approving what we think should be a part of the charter. And Commissioner Proctor talked about his constitutional law and teaching it. I'm pretty sure none of us agreed with what the Constitution said initially. I think we all would say that parts of it just don't apply to us, should have never applied to us. Three-fence a man. Who said, where'd they do that? But along the way, there was a process that they also put in place. And we're not talking about the Constitution. We're talking about the process that was in place to change that Constitution. And that process that was in place to change that Constitution, has it ever changed, Commissioner Minor? Has it ever changed? Did you look at that? The process?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Madam Attorney, has the process to change the Constitution of the United States of America, has it ever changed?
I have not looked at the history of that, so I really don't know. I don't know.
It doesn't. It hasn't. So what we're doing is, we're going to lower the threshold of our process for all the reasons that you guys have spoke of. I think Commissioner Minor, I couldn't have said it better. You did the best job of trying to explain how important this is and why we shouldn't change it. And I think the rhetoric that goes on around why we should change it is, they're just, they're words that just doesn't, to me, justify where we're trying to go. It just doesn't justify it. So we don't agree with the Constitution, so we got a process to change it. That process has changed it every single time it needs to be changed, and it may change in the future. But we're talking about here, we're just going to make it easier to put stuff on the ballot to say that we consent to and that we would like to see changed on our own charter. I just, again, I don't agree with it, but I just wanted to talk about those points because... But I, I just wanted to, to, to talk about those points because if we're going to, if we're going to make a decision based off points, let's make a decision based off the points that make, that really speak to the issue and are actual and factual on, on what we're talking about. So again, I won't support the substitute motion and I made my point, so I won't speak again. I just, I just wish that we, we, we took this a little more seriously than thinking a simple majority would be the way to go. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Maddox. Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, I just, Commissioner Maddox raises great, great questions here and, uh, I just couldn't leave it. Uh, the, the constitution writes its own prescription for change. And, um, of course, when you believe you've reached perfection, you make it as difficult as possible to alter, uh, your perfect thoughts. And that is the prescription written to frustrate and make very challenging to those, um, high-minded persons who believe they had hit the high mark. Um, but what we operate more so is not the federal constitution as much as under the 10th Amendment's states' rights. And whereas the federal government has not preempted states in the area of how to amend their constitutions or their local governments underneath them. So under, under, under 10th Amendment, um, each one of these states is free to set up and do because the federal government has not spoken and told them what or announced it as their power. So all power is not reserved to the federal government. It goes to the people and the states. So we do what we want. So if there's a conflict level, um, today, we are operating in what we're doing right now. Uh, we are actualizing and exercising the authority of the 10th Amendment, uh, states' rights and the powers that endure to the people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioners, we've got, uh, a substitute motion by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Passes four, three. Commissioners Minor, Welch, and Maddox in opposition. All right, Commissioners, uh, now we are on to the second, uh, set of items here, which are the seven issues that we had asked the county attorney to take a look at for us bringing to the CCRC. Uh, I figure the best way to handle that is just to go through them one by one, if that's okay. I mean, does that seem reasonable to everybody? Um, and I, I mean, I think some of them, the county attorney is advising, we do not have the ability to do. So I guess we can get into that. So we'll start with number one. Uh, we'll just go, well, I got Commissioner Maddox and then Commissioner Cummings.
Mr. Chair, um, you said we can go by one, one by one, but I gotta, I mean, I personally, I, I, um, wanted to make a motion that we, we not send any of them. Um, I could vote against every single one of them, but I believe if, uh, the, the conversations that's been had up here about how smart and, and intelligent, um, our CRC is, um, politically astute, understanding what's going on within our community and what we may need, why, why send them, why, why, why try to tell them what we think they should be talking about? Instead of giving them the opportunity as citizens to tell us what they want to talk about and the things they like to see change within our charter. And so, Mr. Chair, you wanted to go one by one, so I don't.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
I'll make, I feel allowed. I mean, we can do whatever you guys want. I mean, I, I, I don't know what the will of the board is, so if you want to make that motion.
I make, I make a motion that we send nothing and that we allow that.
I, I'll second, I'll second that motion.
That we allow the citizens back ideas for change of charge.
All right, Mr. Cummings, you're next. Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Was that moved and seconded?
Yes, ma'am, it was moved and seconded. So right now we are sending none of those to the CRC.
Well, Mr. Chair, um, I had looked at the county attorney's analysis and I think, um, several of them are clearly a no from, from a constitutional standpoint, statutory, statutory, uh, standpoint. And I think if we want to entertain any of them, I think it'd be futile for us to try to go behind what our county attorney has already scrutinized and told us, um, that we can't advance those anyway because it can't, it can't be achieved in the CCR, in the CCRC. So, um, I was looking at those that were emphatically no and a couple, only one or two that we could advance to the committee, but since the, it, the number is so low of the couple that according to our attorney that could be advanced to the committee. My position is really, why waste their time? Uh, allow them to address what issues they feel is most prudent. And then the other side of it is that I don't believe it would violate of the sunshine law. And correct me if I'm, uh, if I'm wrong, Madam Attorney. If any of us contact or talk to members of the CCRC about any issues that, that we might want them to advance in the committee.
That's correct. You don't serve on the same collegial body as the CCRC, so you, any of the board members are welcome to talk to the CCRC members. Just please keep in fact, do not act as a conduit between the CCR members and share their particular perspectives or views on anything that would come before the CCRC.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Attorney. So having gotten that explanation, uh, and clarification, I, I'll support the motion. It's on the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner, um, Madam Attorney, can I get a clarification on, is it number four, number seven that are capable of being forwarded by us, according to your analysis?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, four, it, it's very clearly believed, uh, if it's in the charter, county ordinances, uh, could supersede city ordinances if they are in conflict. And seven, uh, is to clean up the outdated references, statutes related to the establishment of the charter. That is also possible as well.
All right. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Ms., Commissioner O'Keefe, followed by Commissioner Minor, Proctor, and Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, um, I'm, I'm, right now I'm not going to support the motion on the floor. Um, I'd like to hear what everyone else says. I'm not going to offer substitute motion. Um, because I, I think I'll leave it in the posture of letting this pass or fail.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, um, procedural, I like to withdraw my second because I didn't know that counsel had endorsed four. And, um, hearing, uh, her voice on number four, we must, you just say four.
Four and seven. She didn't endorse them. She just said that they're allowable to be, um, to be sent to the CRC by us.
Yeah, well, we, we need four and I didn't recognize your endorsement of it previously.
I don't think she's endorsing it.
That's, I will draw mine.
All right. So we, uh, the second one was withdrawn by Commissioner Proctor and added by Commissioner Minor. We are still in discussion and I believe it is Commissioner O'Keefe.
It is. Let me tell you guys and ladies, that changes everything. Um, I'll just say, I think, I, I would hope that we, because we may be a little worn from our prior debate, like happened last week, I want to make sure that we flush out all of our thoughts here because I don't want us to come back in another week and say we weren't paying attention.
Well, the night is young. We got a lot.
And so I want to make sure that we are giving this all the due attention it deserves. Um, and, and you may remember, I believe I voted against requesting an analysis for all of these. It, it, and when we voted on this in July was the idea that let the citizens, um, figure it out. I have a couple of questions. Um, can, if we don't send anything, can the citizens committee pick up any of these items by their own decision?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. And then I had a question on our current practice on one of the items. Now, number two, now it's clear we do not have the authority to do number two, but it led me to a question. Right now, for voluntary annexations, does the city and the county have to vote and agree on voluntary annexations into the city from unincorporated area?
The, there are two ways to do voluntary annexations, uh, or, or there's one way involuntaries to the city. Um, yeah, the, the county has a voice in that, but it's based on certain criteria that we can consider. Um, if, if the board applying that criteria still says no, it goes to like dispute resolution, basically to break the tie, if you will. Um, but, but yes, it requires consent of both, understanding that, that the, the county is limited to only consider certain criteria.
Certainly. Thank you. Okay.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. Um, to the question, the county, uh, in my 29 years has never stood in the way or objected to the city's, uh, push for annexation and request that we approve it. So while two bodies may be required, the county has never, uh, objected. We've had two or three instances of, um, he and him in a horn, but no, we've never stood in the, in the city's way.
Noted. That's good to know. It's, it's a new day since 2022. Commissioner Caban always tells me.
I think, I think we, I think you need to specify what, what, what that objection has to be based on.
Well, you know, this, this, thank you. That was just a question I regret asking now. That, that was operational and it, and it has nothing to do with the motion except for that there were issues of annexation in the, in the, the materials. That's all. Uh, Counselor, I withdraw the question. Um, I, I think that we've had staff look at this, all of these items. The majority decided after a long debate in July to have staff look at these items and basically two came back that could be considered. Now, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion on either of those. But I am of the opinion that if we said they were important enough as a board to look at and staff looked at them, let's let the citizens look at it. We're not telling them, um, I don't think we're telling them yes or no on it. I think we're telling them we want this looked at and so look at it. Uh, so I'm gonna, um, uh, vote for whatever motion ends up being voted on that has us passing through four and seven. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm going to support the motion on the floor and here's why. Um, if you look at the seven issues that, that this body brought up at the last meeting, and for those of you who are on your, on the edge of your seats at home, that starts at page 89 in the agenda packet at the top. Um, of those seven, uh, issues, our county attorney's office did an excellent job on the legal analysis, by the way, on each of these. And I want to thank the county attorney and her staff for working on these. Of the seven items, um, five of them have been preempted by one entity or another. Whether it's the state preempted us on an issue, whether forming utility review board. We could create the board, but we have no authority to regulate the city on what the city does for its utilities. So all those examples I thought were very well done, um, which leaves us with number four and number seven. Um, I think we're going to, I think number four is a, is a, is a sticky spot for some of us. I, I look at that and I've got some grave concerns about it because if we were to ask the citizens review committee to take a look at this, what is, what you're asking them to do is, is take a very blunt instrument on, on something that should be done with a fine-tooth comb. I used to work at the city 10 years ago and I wasn't a city commissioner or of course, but, but I, I worked in the, in the staff over there. And the ordinances that the city Tallahassee constructs, uh, by and large, over the years, over the decades, have been very carefully thought out. And, you know, the city has a different demographic than the county as a whole. You know, much of it is urban and, and there are, there are often very good reasons for why the city might establish its own ordinances. So what this number four is proposing, the way I read it, is just a blanket declaration that county ordinances are going to have power and supersede city ordinances. That's a bull in a china shop with all kinds of things in that china shop that are probably worth preserving. Now, we could go through every single city ordinance that would be superseded and evaluate that and have a debate on that. I mean, I don't know what good that will do, but I mean, it's, you're talking about an incredible amount of time. Uh, if I were on the CCRC, I would want to have a good overview of, of what the implications of what this number four might be before I would vote to approve or not approve it. So you're, you're asking an incredibly broad statement to be applied on innumerable number of details and city ordinances that have been developed over decades, uh, with careful deliberation. Um, and I, I think it's, it's just, it's not a very, I don't remember who brought it up, but I just, I don't think it's a very well thought up issue. So I'm going to support the motion on the floor, but I do want to talk briefly about number seven. Uh, for those of you, it's basically cleaning up the outdated references to statutes related to the establishment of a county charter. Now, if you read the write-up on this in the agenda item, this isn't a policy matter for debate. This is more of a technical issue. So rather than ask the CCRC to spend some of their valuable time on a technical issue that doesn't really require an opinion on policy, let's go ahead and take that care of that right now. So what I propose to Commissioner Maddox is, you know, keep with the, the spirit of the motion, but add a friendly amendment to that, which is take number seven, direct staff to come up, to do the work, to take the technical attributes of that and then present that to us at some later date. So this body, this body with a two thirds majority could vote on that to be on the ballot next year. That's where the work should be done because staff is going to be needed to do that work regardless of whether or not the county is going to deal with it, the county commission that is, or the CCRC. CCRC is going to be busy talking about policy. Let's not burden them with technical issues such as this one. So Commissioner Maddox, my friendly amendment would be to basically take number seven, ask staff to come back with the technical resolution on, on how to address number seven so that we can then deliberate on whether or not we'll get two thirds vote with that on the ballot through our own county commission.
Commissioner Maddox, you called that?
Yes.
All right. So we've got a friendly amendment. Motion still Commissioner Maddox is with Commissioner Minor in second. Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Caban, then Commissioner Cummings.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask, uh, county attorney, uh, I have proposed, uh, an eighth item of consideration, uh, tonight. And that is, uh, that I've shared with you moments ago. And that is to let voters decide in 2026, uh, whether the city or county, uh, should operate, uh, and manage the fire department beginning in 2029. And, uh, I wanted to, uh, Mr. Chairman, to understand, are we confined to these seven mere points? Or I've come with an additional point tonight, uh, dealing with, um, uh, uh, placing, uh, the fire services issue before the voters. And I've, uh, illumined for each of you, um, 10 points that support, uh, in my opinion, uh, this idea. But it seemed like the conversation is just rattling around and, and the things that we've already gnawed on this bone before. Can I, um, introduce an eighth point tonight?
Can we, Commissioner Proctor, I would like to ask if we could take that up in commissioner discussion time so that we can get through this item. I, I don't know if staff has got an opinion on whether we can do that or not, but.
If, if we did that, would I be able to interject it in the bundle of?
I, I mean, I think it's directing staff.
I don't want to miss a train. I don't want to miss a train. I want, I want this point on the train if it goes forward.
Madam Attorney, could we hold off on this till discussion time or does it need to go on this train?
No, he could, Commissioner Proctor could bring this up under his commissioner discussion time. And if there's direction from the board, that could be forwarded to the CRC as well.
So can we hold off on that and just get through this and then come back to that?
Okay. Okay. Back to, um, number four. This commission remembers well, uh, I, when, when last year on the naming of the Wanish Way and the Althea Gibson Street, uh, we thought we were following, well, no, we didn't thought we were following, uh, and the city went and changed their very ordinance so as to trump the county and to extend Althea Gibson Way south of Orange Avenue all the way to Bragg Drive. That right there is enough to convince me that we need to have item four. Uh, Commissioner Minor, you typically yourself, um, you seek, uh, the, the path of least resistance and you never want conflict and with the city and nothing like that. Um, I simply think that for what happened to this board, uh, our authority to name streets, uh, all of that, uh, we got clobbered and the city came back and put ordinance forward and shut our mouth, put tape across our lips. And we, the only reason we had to take that is because we hadn't, number four was not established. We need that established because we got strong arm out of, out of our own vote uh, by getting preempted, usurped, overpowered, and run over. So that's why I withdraw my second because we need number four, simply based on what happened and the inconveniences for my own family. happened and the inconveniences for my own family and other families who live south of Orange Avenue on Wanish Way.
All right. Commissioner Caban, you're up, then Commissioner Cummings, Maddox, and Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a substitute motion to send items number four and seven on this list to the CCRC.
All right. We have a substitute motion for items four and seven.
Second.
Second, about Commissioner Proctor, we're in discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, listen, Commissioner Minor, I, I, you brought up some great points, but I, I, I tend to disagree with the majority of what you said. In one of our previous agendas, there was a map, and I was looking to find it to see if I could put it up on, on the screen, that showed the annexation of the city of Tallahassee over time, particularly over the last 100 years. And Commissioner Minor, as it sits right now, every time a piece of property is annexed into the city of Tallahassee of your district, you lose the ability to, to represent your district. Anytime any property in Leon County is annexed into the city, we lose the ability to legislate policy that benefits our constituency. If you look at the map, there's continue of annexation in the northeast, on the east side of town, northwest part of town. And every time that happens, we cannot represent our constituency to the fullest of our elected ability. Just last meeting, we passed an ordinance to change the way fire services assessment was collected in the unincorporated area. The reason for that was case law from the city of Ocala that showed that the city of Tallahassee is collecting the fire services assessment in a unconstitutional manner. Two-thirds of our constituency lives in city limits, yet our policy that we vote on is limited to the unincorporated area. Commissioner Minor, I think what we could do here is actually propose a charter amendment that gives us the ability to decide if we want policy to, to go countywide or if it's policy that we could dictate to the city. Madam Attorney, could we have, could we have a charter amendment proposed that gives us the ability to, if there is a conflict, to decide if it supersedes the city and/or defer to city limits?
No. I mean, the, the charter has to be clear about in the event of a conflict, whether a city ordinance basically prevails or whether a county ordinance prevails. I mean, we do it currently for minimum environmental standards thresholds or, or requirements, but that's clear. I mean...
That's nothing, so it's nothing, this isn't new. It would be new if we proposed to expand it, but we currently do this with environmental standards currently in Leon County.
We set it at floor. That's correct.
Okay. And, and voters voted on that in the charter?
That's correct.
Okay, correct. Commissioners, I, I don't know if, um, you all have been paying attention to some of the, the feedback that has been relayed over the last 10 days, but I would say now more than ever, it is imperative that this board has the ability to legislate countywide. It's, it's, it's important now more than ever. And right now, we are limited and over time, as more properties annexed into city limits, I will say this again, we lose our ability to fully represent our constituency. Additionally, you see right now, the city of Tallahassee serves folks in the unincorporated with utilities. We have very little say over how that's dictated. With an ordinance like this, this would be able to help that. And so I, I, I think it's imperative that we look at and have the conversation, at least send this to the CCRC up for discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Maddox?
Commissioner Minor, I appreciate your second. It'll come up anyway. I'm going to go ahead and rescind my motion. If we can take up this main motion, doesn't pass, then, uh, I'll make the motion again. I don't want anybody to think me rescinding my motion is approval of sending four and seven to the CRC because it's not. I'll be voting against the motion on the floor. Mr. Administrator? How many times have we had, since you can count, involuntary annexation by the city?
Involuntary.
Involuntary.
They're far less frequent than voluntary annexations.
We, we tend to have those a lot, right?
We don't tend to have involuntary.
No, voluntary we tend to have every now and...
Yes, yes, we do.
Voluntary meaning that there's a constituent that lives in the county who has elected themselves to want to be a part of the city and receive city services, correct?
That's right.
So the city didn't coerce them or make them. They wanted to be within the city limits, correct?
That's, that's generally how it happens.
I don't, the way, Mr. Administrator, Madam Attorney, I don't know which one would be best to answer this question, but we have one municipality within Leon County, correct? Yeah. The city is incorporated and in charge of, of legislating everybody within the city limits. Yes?
Yes.
And those folks who have annexed into the city are aware of that, I'm guessing, and know that along with the city services that they receive, they'll receive the increased cost of living within the city, and they'll also receive a tax bill from the city. I, there are, there are instances where the county supersedes the city or sets the minimum requirements, not even supersedes, we set the minimum requirements on what the city can and can't do. Is that true, Madam Attorney?
For minimum environmental standards, that's correct.
Right. So when it comes to, Madam, when it comes to the environmental standards, we, we set a minimum, the, the, the bar, and they can go above that bar, but they can't go below that bar?
Correct.
Right. I'm not... There are cities all over the United States of America. There's counties all over the United States of America. There's 60, 67 counties in the state of Florida. You know, 67 counties, there are all kinds of cities, and those cities take care of their citizens within their jurisdictions, within their, within their city limits. And those county commissioners take care of those folks outside of the city limits if you're not consolidated. Is that correct, Mr. Administrator?
Correct.
I'm not, I'm not a city commissioner. I'm a county commissioner. I don't run a utility. I don't understand the intricacies of how a utility works. I could learn, but I ran for county commission. I, I, I believe that without consolidation, which we all know, we've all got calls about it, um, the city, which has existed now for over, I think 100 years, right? Have ran their business without county oversight. Is that correct, Mr. Administrator? And the only thing that we've ever set the minimum requirements on the city was that of environmental standards?
Unless the city hasn't developed an ordinance on a policy in which place, in which case they don't conflict, and so they may defer to a county policy.
Right.
Just voluntarily?
Yes.
If the state, which they're doing, came down and looked at our budget and said, "We don't agree with the way y'all are spending your budget, and so we're going to just take it from you and do what we want to do," because we know better how to make a budget for a county than the county commissioner. I would sit here before you and tell you that the state would be wrong, because I deal with county politics every day, all day, and I've been here a while and I understand how counties work. I'm not, uh, I'm not arrogant enough to say to the city that as a county commissioner, I understand better how they should run the city. I don't have city staff. I have county staff. So, again, my, 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 if the, if the citizens Charter Review Committee sent back to us without us sending to them that this is something that they would like for us to put on the ballot, I would have liked to have it from a supermajority, but now it's a simple majority, then we would have, I would have a discussion about it. But I am not in favor of sending, sending this down to them to tell them that we would like for them to look at it, because in essence, it says it's something that we think that we should do and should be in place. And so I can't support four. Seven, uh, if we're going down this road, Commissioner Minor already brought it up, I don't think it's a bad idea. It's one way or the other. We just send it to them and they come up to us or we do it ourselves. I can, I can go with seven. I can't, I can't support four. Again, I just, I caution us to understand that we are one municipality, we have one municipality within Leon County. And those city, those city residents are there by choice. People who move into Leon County and choose to move into the city, they choose to move in the city. They choose to be represented by that commission. They choose to, to have city utilities. They choose to, to want to deal with the, with the, with the government that they're dealing with when they deal with the city of Tallahassee. But I also want us to understand that those who choose to live in the county have chosen to live there. They want to live in the county. They don't want to, they don't want city services. They don't want the city feel. What they want is they want to live in the county and they want to be represented by this commission. Those who are voluntarily asking to be a part of the city are choosing to be in the city. And Madam Attorney, what I was going to ask earlier when Commissioner O'Keefe asked, what, there are certain things, because I, we've had this discussion a bunch, there has to be certain things in place for us to say no to a voluntary annexation. It ain't like we can just deny it, correct? If, if we just don't want them, want somebody to voluntary annex, we can't just say no. There's got to be a reason, right?
There has to be a reason, like it creates an enclave or something like that. There are certain statutory criteria to consider.
Right, right. And so for those citizens who want to live in the city and they're contiguous to the, the USA lines, I think that's one of the, one of the, one of the standards, then I, I'm not going to get in their way if they want those city services and they want to pay city taxes. I, I understand that the logic of, well, they understand too then that they're losing the jurisdiction that we may have over them to legislate on certain things, but I'm sure they're taking that into consideration when they're moving into the city and they understand that now they are going to the city commission for what they want. They're not going to the county commission. So, uh, I think I've pontificated enough here. I, I can't support four, but I, I will go ahead and support seven since it was a part of my original motion. Again, I just believe that, uh, we shouldn't supersede the city on everything, that government, there's a government across the street that's called the city. There's a government across the street that's called the state. I don't necessarily like it when the state tries to supersede us on things. And because I don't like it when the state, the state tries to supersede us on things, I'm not going to do that to the city. And, and, and over across the board, maybe considering things that may make sense, but I don't think across the board that we should say that we're superior to the city in our decision-making, and we know their business better than they know their business. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Maddox, um, so you withdrew your substitute. We're back on, we're now on the substitute, which is now the original motion, which is four and seven. So Commissioner Maddox, did you want to come up with a way to get seven out of there or what?
I, I mean, if we could, I mean, you asked for us to bifurcate, Mr. Chair, and I removed my motion. Um, I would ask the maker of the motion to just take up four, because I believe across the board, seven would probably cross, uh, would probably pass unanimously. So I would ask the maker of the motion to remove seven and just have us vote on four.
All right. Commissioner, who made the motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine to, I'm fine to amend that, and I was going to respond to Commissioner Maddox's comments as well.
Go ahead. So we're on just item four now going to the CCRC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm just confused a little bit by some of the comments, Commissioner Maddox, because we're not talking about city services. We're talking about ordinances. And, uh, two-thirds of our constituents, constituency lives within city limits and they vote for us as county commissioners. And 100% of the city of Tallahassee residents are residents of Leon County. And I don't know about other folks, but I, I, I try my best to represent all residents across Leon County, including the city of Tallahassee. And they elected me, elected us to represent interests across the county, and some of those interests are within city limits. And I make it a point to be very aware of those issues within city limits. And in fact, I would say that large portion of issues in my district are within city limits, and there is a lack of effort by the city of Tallahassee to address those issues. And I've made it very clear. I've talked about Pensacola Street over and over again. We've extended to how many olive branches across multiple issues. It's very clear that right now, any issue that we bring up as a board to the city of Tallahassee in city limits, they make it a point to ignore. And, you know, I think right now, especially from what I'm hearing from residents across this county in city limits, outside of city limits, I think that it's very evident that they look at our body as the leading body across, across the county. And all I'm saying is let's ask voters if they would like to formalize that, and that's all I'm asking, you know, and if, if, you know, it's all I'm asking. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Proctor, and then Caban again and Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've been listening to what people's comments have been very carefully and, um, and Commissioner Caban, I, I hear what you're saying about Pensacola. I've had, you know, I've had, we've all, I think, had similar issues. But there are also ways where we have worked with the city, like when it comes to public safety. I mean, I worked with the sheriff's office, bringing in TPD, and, and there are ways to do that, too.
I've done that, Mr., I've done that, Commissioner Minor, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the, the question I have, and I, and I heard your discussion about representation and how anytime we get property annexed into the city, we lose our ability to represent that, that neighborhood to the same degree that they were in the unincorporated area. But the people that I think are most concerned about that are the people at this table. You know, most people out there don't care if, 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 if the city is working on something versus the county. They just want to see it done. And so I think I know where this motion is going, and we'll have more discussion about number four, you know, at some point, if it comes back, if it gets out of the CCRC, we'll discuss this in more detail. But I did have one question before I, before I leave number four. What specifically, what problem, other than representation, do we hope to address with this number four amendment? Like what, what specific area do you want to change or address a problem for with this number four?
You asking Commissioner Caban?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What I would like to do, Commissioner Minor, is defer this to the CCRC, have them discuss it and see if there's anything in particular that they would like to tailor this down to, or would they like to broaden it to be any ordinance, right? No, what I really want to do is just kick it down, let them have a conversation. If it dies there, it dies there. If it comes up to us, then we can look if we need to fine tune it or not. And I'm, I'm saying this pretty much just based on any of the other topics that we would send to them. Does that answer your question?
It does, it does. Thanks. Appreciate it. And let me wrap up and say, you know, Commissioner Proctor said earlier that, that I like to avoid conflict with the city. And, um, I just want to, I just want to say, I don't look at this in anywhere near the same way that you are, Mr. Proctor. You're looking at, I'm going to tell you what I think. I think you're looking at this at like the city commission's got to win this, or the, the, the county commission's got to win this and the city's got to lose. One side's got to win and one side's got to lose, or we've got to show them, or we've got to show them who's boss, or we've got to play hardball, which is what you said at the last meeting. You know, we shouldn't be looking at it like that. These are, these are two local governments. These are two local governments that serve a common population with overlap, right? We should be taking a look at what we need to do to work with the city to best serve our citizens, not who's going to win, not who's going to beat the other guy at fire services, not who's going to get a charter amendment to have superseding all their ordinances. I mean, that's a war that is going to have one loser and one winner at that particular stage. There'll always be another battle. And if we keep on fighting those battles, one side might win, the other side might lose, might flip the next time, but you know who's going to lose all the time? Are the citizens who live in Leon County and the citizens who live in the city. So, I want to try to get us away from this idea of like, we got to show them, or they've angered us, so we're going to push back. Listen, I've been angry at the city many times. I have confronted and engaged in conflict with the city. I've gone to CRA meetings and spoken for a position that I knew the city commission was not going to support. I've written op-eds urging them to do one thing when I knew they were probably going to do the other. I have no problem with conflict. But when it comes to a battle of city versus county, the people that are going to really lose are the citizens who live in Leon County and the city of Tallahassee. And I think we need to keep that in mind. We're not here for us, we're here for serving those people. And fighting about one thing or another over and over again, it was never going to end. And the people that are going to lose out are the people who live here. Those are my comments, and I think I know where this motion is going. It sounds like we're probably going to move on with number four. We'll have that discussion first. And I do want to hear what the CCRC is going to say and bring back to us. And I look forward to that discussion at a later time. Commissioner Caban, will you accept a friendly amendment to take number seven as something directing to staff to work up and then present to the county commission? So, that way the CRC doesn't have to spend time on what I think the county administrator would agree would be a technical issue as opposed to a policy one?
I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, great.
All right, Commissioner Cummings, I got you in the queue, but you're behind Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Proctor. Do you want to jump ahead of them? So, we're on just number four right now.
With the amendment.
With the amendment that seven lets staff handle seven. Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Proctor, y'all, I assume you're okay letting Commissioner Cummings go?
I would prefer it.
Yes, Commissioner Cummings, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think it's remarkable, we started out, I guess, at our last meeting with the items that we wanted the CCRC to address. The county attorney and her staff did a great job on analyzing those seven items that we wanted to send to the CCRC. And I think they were able to showed us statutorily, constitutionally, and from a legal standpoint, which ones were viable, which ones we really shouldn't saddle the CCRC with. I think it's commendable tonight that we've had several motions on the floor, some withdrawn after hearing our discussion. But I'm just concerned, and I don't want us to have the actions that we take be fueled by the situation that we find ourselves in now with the city as it relates to the fire services fee. I know we received correspondence this week from our county administrator, where the city, of course, indicated that they're terminating our fire services contract. So, it's tension there clearly between the city and the county. I don't want us as a body to send items to the committee as a result of a carryover of our tension with the city. I don't want our emotions to get the best of us and we not get the best that we can out of this citizens review committee that's going to look at the charter. Of course, my druthers were in support of Commissioner Maddox's initial motion that we not send anything to the committee. Let's trust them, let them look at the charter independently and come back to us. Knowing that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam County Attorney, any of the issues that we wanted addressed that the county attorney said that we could address, that we have the ability to do that as a body. Number four, we have the ability as the county commission to address those without sending that issue to the committee. And so, if it's my preference, and I know that's not the motion on the floor, but I wish that level heads would, calm heads would prevail and that we allow that committee to do their work, independent of where we are, independent of our concerns with the city now as it relates to fire services, as it relates to what body has the power for ordinances to prevail over, municipal ordinance to prevail over the county, or vice versa. That's something that we can address ourselves. So, I don't want to support the motion on the floor, primarily because it is sending our concern and our emotions and our disappointment with our negotiations with the city at this time. However, I wish we would think about the fact that we maintain that authority ourselves. We can address it and we can decide that this should be a referendum for the citizens to decide. And not put that, and I don't want to call it baggage because I know that it's out of genuine concern, hopefully. Our ultimate concern is, as Commissioner Minor indicated, the taxpayers, the citizens that we represent. And so, in that respect, we could take it up ourselves as a body. And I would hope that Commissioner Caban would consider that and perhaps withdraw the portion of the motion where we're going to send item four to the committee. And I just, actually, think about it, I don't want our emotions to get the best of us and saddle the committee with that.
So, Commissioner Cummings, if I was going to do it for anyone, it would be you. Let me say that. The issue with that circles back to the conversation from earlier, where if it doesn't go to the committee, it takes five votes, versus if it goes to the committee and comes back to us, it takes four. And so, that's kind of what's kind of holding me up on it. But I will say that, you know, prior to even this fire services fee, you know, scuffle with the city, I had talked to the county administrator about this going back in spring before this was an issue, that I felt like this is better legislatively for us as a body, just purely on the annexation process of, you know, I believe there was a map to one of our previous agenda items that showed how much land has been annexed over time into city limits, and that's going to continue to grow. What I worry is that there's a lot of folks in our rural communities that are going to get annexed in, like Bratherville's getting annexed in on the north side, you know, Woodville, not saying I want that to be annexed, but we don't have, clearly what we are set is voluntarily, we lose that authority, we have to approve it, which has been told to us in the past. Does that make sense? Yes, ma'am.
All right, Commissioner O'Keefe and then Commissioner Proctor, and then I think, are you good? Yep, we're going to have a vote on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Cummings, your wish is granted, I'm going to bring my level head to this one. So, I'm of two minds of this because I have had an issue where we get repeatedly, I'm very much focused on representing my constituents, who are city and county residents, as much as my unincorporated residents, because I represent them, they pay county property taxes, that's why I fought for them when we did the team award. And often, you know, I'll get a call about an issue someone's having and it will be in the city limits and we'll send it over to the city. And the feedback I get is that they don't get a response. They don't get as responsive concern as they do with the county. And so, I've actually seen it happen where people come to us with their issues more, even when it's outside of our jurisdiction, because we are very responsive. And that is a good way to be. I don't know if that was the same, I don't know if there was that same difference in responsiveness five years ago or 10 years ago. And I don't know if that's the same difference going to be in five years or 10 years from now. And that's the scope and the timeframe with which I think about charter amendments. And that's why I'm of two minds of this. You know, as far as annexation and people choosing to live in the city or outside of the city, when I'm knocking doors on folks in the unincorporated area, of the few people who knew what the heck a county commission was, they said over and over, we don't want to live in the city and we keep having to move and we keep having to move. So, whether that's because of other, you know, whatever changes, so it is a concern for people. And the reason I originally was okay with forwarding number four was because I expected that the citizens would look at ordinance topic by ordinance topic by ordinance topic. Because I don't think we should take over all the ordinances. I think that's way out of line for us. And I don't assume that that's what was intended. But I don't want anyone to misunderstand my intention in supporting that to begin with because I think it's important that we, and I trust that every one of my colleagues up here, and I believe this, are not acting out of emotion or anything. We all put that to the side and we make our votes individually on what's in the best interest of the citizens. I see it day in and day out from this commission. That we not let what is a temporary dispute factor into what is a charter amendment change. I think that's very important. That being said, even before any dispute came up recently about recent issues, I've had concerns that there's certain ordinance topic areas that it doesn't make sense where we can have conflicting ordinances. There are certain ones, development codes, we have a joint office, but not the ordinances are not all the same. We decided in the past environmental management would be different. And I think there are those specific areas for that. But I'm not going to support going forward on four now because I want, well, one thing, I'm sure all 21 members watch this commission, and so, they know it's an issue and I trust them to bring up it topic by topic. I would hate for it to start off as a blanket, we're taking over, which I don't think is how it was intended, but I think that's where it's flowed down the river of conversation to. And so, that's why I'm going to change my mind on this, to not support it going through, in the hopes that they will take up the individual few issue topics for that. And again, I'll just leave it with, leave it with that and say how much we love our city colleagues, too, that's why I know I'm a city resident.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, then I'll say a few words and then we'll...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The de facto city government that we keep talking about, the city, the city, the city, we're talking about John Daley, Curtis Richardson, Diane Williams-Cock. That's who we're talking about. And to your point, Commissioner Minor, it is us versus them. And you have to see that in the city's own handling with internal city government. There's three and there's two. And if you don't see that, sir, I'm asking you to study some voting records of the city if you don't see that. So, not only is it applied outside, beyond the three, who we're really referencing as the de facto power of the city. And they practice an exclusionary, strong arm, hard bat, hardball, and they don't even include certain commissioners' voices. One of their little members can't even be a vice chair or nothing, can't be the vice mayor. I ain't telling you nothing that I don't observe, that's what I see. Involuntary annexation, county administrator did occur down at between four-point, between Crawfordville and Woodville Highway when the city went down and the people said, please. They voted, they voted in front of, with 71, 2 or 3%, 70-some percent voted not to be annexed. And the city went down and annexed gerrymandered particular properties. And if you look at that thing now, it looks like sweet as cheese. This is why, when you come to number three, Commissioner Minor, on how the city behaves on us versus them, I want this area inside of Capitol Circle, inside of Capitol Circle, from Spring Hill Road back over to, all the way back around to Woodville Highway, back down to Blairstone, back down to Orange Avenue, back down to Monday Street, all these areas that are inside the USA, the urban services area, but they cannot be annexed in the city. Now, I am looking at commissioners and I want it number three to go. But county attorney has written all this written and seems like this ain't got disease. But the question is about the voter suppression. Yeah, is it dense? Yeah, population-wise, people live side by side by side, cross the street side by side, it's tight. It's tight and right for annexation. Is it contiguous to an existing city, is it an enclave? No, it's not an enclave. It's right, it's contiguous to an existing city line. There's no excuse, except I am saying that black voters who pay city utilities are being excluded out of the city because the city does not want these black voters to vote in city election. And there's a heap of them, or let me say, a whole lot of them, or let me say, they are many. That right there is racial politics and the annexation and who to keep out is based on race and voting and power and white power. Now, you might say, we got two black commissioners up there with the mayor. I don't care about the lame duck quack-quack mayor. He got two people going to vote for the mayor, period. Have you seen the voter, Commissioner Minor, look at it sometimes? And when you say the city, us versus them, I don't know what color jersey you wear, but when the mayor says that I ain't going to have a city commissioner naming those streets or telling us what we can't do, that's us versus them. When the city proposes a 22% increase in fire fees and have not done a rate study per the agreement, have not talked to our administrator, no negotiation, and we said no, but we offered a 17%, they said no. So, to perpetrate this act of piracy against citizens that we stood up to say no, we're not going to allow piracy to occur and to violate the contract which we are abiding by. And then, to say, well, we need to just build our own, they need to build their own. See, when you say that somebody needs to do their own thing, that means it's us versus them. They don't want you a part of theirs, so they tell you, get your own. That's what that word "own" stands for, separate, that's what they believe. So, when the city goes and borrows $10 million beyond what we shook hands on and we didn't know nothing about it, $10 million, and then says, because we wouldn't allow them to commit piracy against the citizens of this community with an upcharge of 22%, and then got mad and have still leveled a 10%, they're going to get 10% and then say, we're not going to build the South Side Fire Truck Station because we don't have the funds. Well, damn, what you going to do with the $10 million extra you done borrowed for the purpose of building it? See, so it is us versus them. Because even when you set money to build something for the South Side and then borrow 10 more million dollars and you got multiple times more money and we still can't get a station built, that's just them versus us. It keeps going down and lame duck himself got two people support him. That's crazy. But he ain't going to be there, they ain't going to be there, and we ain't going to be there. But that's the way it is today. And the only place that I live and the only place I can breathe is in today and go by what I see. And the city has extended school services on the other side of... And the city has extended sewer services on the other side of Capitol Circle in a place called Southwood, but the people on this side, on Monday Street, can't get sewer services. H.R. Horton comes down there the other day last year, and H.R. Horton is building, yeah, I said lame duck. H.R. Horton is down there across the street from Capitol Circle and they in the city, but people who been inside of Capitol Circle cannot get sewer. That's them versus us, Commissioner Minor. You don't have that problem on your side of town? I get, pipes go way up Lake Jackson. I get that. You, you, you okay. Your focus okay. But I'm, I'm right here and right down the street inside of Capitol Circle and can't get people included, annexed, and they got everything going for them. They contiguous, they got density and all the elements there. But, Mr. Chairman, they are paying, they are paying municipal utilities to the City of Tallahassee, but they cannot vote. We may see things differ. My sight is warm and reality is what I've seen. And the city puts pipes way up in the chairman's district, way up in your district, way out in Commissioner O'Keefe's district, but I'd be, damn, I can't get a pipe to come down to Capitol Circle to save my life. Something is wrong, something is awry, it's racial. And quack-quack lame duck and his two people who are the city, that's what, this is what they're running. That's where we are. And so number three ought to be a part of this package, but it done got killed
You mean number four?
By the county attorney, but I am, we're four, because the city is out of control. They out of control and they stand up and go up 22% on everybody and somebody ought to be guarding this community and we are trying to. So I don't wear their jersey. You want their color jersey, you wear it. All this peace in the valley and all like that, that's not what they're doing, 22% in these hard times. No, we must stand them down and we deserve that power. P-O-W-E-R, power. Thank you.
All right, so commissioners, we've got, it's not a substitute, it's the motion, right? The motion for to move forward to the CCRC excluding number seven to give to staff. Commissioner Minor, you're, you're good? All right, I'm going to support the motion only because I think that, why not let the CCRC chew on it? I may very well vote against it if it comes back, but I don't need to like pontificate on that. I think it's just, why not? I mean, the county attorney says it's within our jurisdiction, we already do it for environmental regulation, why not let the CCR? I mean, if we truly want to know a citizen, a representative citizen group, they'll, they may very well say this is a terrible idea too. So why not? I mean, like I said, we're not voting on its final passage now, so that's where I'm at. Commissioners, we've got a motion and who was the second or, I think it was, it was Commissioner Proctor. So we've got a motion from Commissioner Caban to move item number four to the CCRC and a second from Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox, did you just jump in?
I'm going to make a motion after this.
Okay, Commissioner Caban, did you want to hop in?
Yeah, and also was the
Removing number seven and giving that to staff?
Whenever, whenever he asked the amendment, I accepted it.
Can you rephrase?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Yes, so the friendly amendment was to basically take number seven off this list, so it's not presented to the CCRC because it's a technical issue. Instead, what this friendly amendment would do is direct staff to do the work, put the agenda item together, present it to the county commission, which hopefully would then attain a two-thirds majority vote to put it on the ballot, saving the CCRC time on something that's not a policy issue.
All right, so Commissioner Maddox, help me out here. So we're voting on a motion, not a substitute motion?
I'm voting on his motion.
Yeah, so you're gonna make a motion after this motion? Can we do that once we dispense of this item?
Of course.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of the motion on the floor, seconded by, or made by Commissioner Caban, seconded by Commissioner Proctor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so it fails four-three.
Wait, no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It what?
You want a roll?
The substitute motion failed.
It was the original.
It's now the main motion.
Yeah, yeah, well, we just
Did you vote four again?
I voted four.
Okay, pass. Oh, okay, so the substitute motion did pass.
The main motion, it's now the main motion that passed four-three.
Okay, the main motion passed four-three. Okay, so we're done with the item, right? Okay. All right, so commissioners, I think we're now on commissioner time. Is that correct? That is, or, I'm sorry, Madam County Attorney, do you have anything for us or?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm just seeking your authorization to, given the city's official notice to us on their intent to terminate the fire services agreement, to hire a consultant through a competitive solicitation and to begin the process of evaluating alternatives. As we've made very clear, obviously, the continuous level, the current level service will continue through the remainder of the contract, however, it's not too soon to begin exploring alternatives. And so I would just seek your authorization tonight to do that. Of course, I would bring back the results of the competitive solicitation along with budget and timeline and all those details back to this board for your approval, but I would need your authorization to proceed with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move authorization of requests made by our county administrator.
We got a motion, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna ask also for a friendly amendment on that, Commissioner Proctor, to also direct our county attorney to request a asset list for all the fire stations, I'm gonna pass this on to go on there, that would be applicable
That's yours.
In our, in the transition and sale to the county. And this, I'm passing some documentation to go along with that. I don't know if I said that correctly.
Yeah, could you restate that?
So
I think we're good on this one.
Okay, take that.
Yeah, I need that one.
I need Need one more copy. Sorry, I messed that up. I need that, I give it.
It's all right.
All right, so commissioners, I'm sending to you a page from our interlocal agreement. And Matt, can we put this up there by chance?
Commissioner, tell us what these words extracted.
I will. So, so this is the page from our interlocal agreement with the city, and this is basically the portion that talks about what happens to assets if this agreement is terminated. And so in section two, it says, upon termination of this agreement, the city agrees to sell at the sole option of the county, fire stations 10 through 14, inclusive of land or any interest therein, and the structures attached there too, to the county at a price equal to the city's investment in the same, but in no event to exceed $525,000. So, Madam Attorney, based on our briefing today, your interpretation is that stations 10 through 14 must be sold to the county for a total of $525,000.
Not to exceed it.
Not to exceed.
That's correct.
So
We got 15.
And then it says, fire station 15, inclusive of land or any interest therein, and the structure attached there too, to the county at a price equal to the city's investment in same. From my research this morning, I believe that was built in 1998 or 2000, maybe, yeah. And I believe it was built just shy of $3 million. I could be wrong. I just obviously would defer to the city's documentation. And then further, it talks about, upon termination of this agreement, the city agrees to sell to the county at the sole option of the county, all firefighting apparatus and vehicles located in stations 10 through 14 for a price equal to the unambiguished portion of the equipment, using a 15-year depreciation schedule for each tanker, pumper, engine, and a 10-year depreciation schedule for each quick-response vehicles and brush truck. So from my interpretation of this, the equipment for those fire stations must be sold to us on a 15-year depreciation schedule and a 10-year depreciation schedule. And so I wanted to point that out because I want to make sure that, you know, clearly there's, we have discrepancies with our counterparts at the city on terms of this agreement, and I think it would be dangerous to wait until the end of the agreement to see, to work on that transition of equipment. And so as part of the friendly amendment, Commissioner Proctor, I would like the county attorney to start working through the asset transition process, so that way, if there is a holdup at the end of the term of this agreement, we, I mean, we have to be able to have this infrastructure to provide service to the unincorporated residents.
Madam Attorney, is what Commissioner Caban germane to the motion? In terms of the scope of the consultant that would look at what administrators suggested?
Well, I mean, it could be, because that would potentially, any assets that the county would have to provide the services would be relevant to whatever the provision of those services would look like after the termination of the interlocal agreement.
Absolutely, then, I'm comfortable.
All right, so we've got a motion for county administrator's recommendation to hire a consultant, included, inclusive of this language, dealing with equipment and facilities. And was there a second? I think, yeah. There was a motion, who was the second? Who was the motion? He made the motion.
No, I made the motion.
We need a second. Okay, we got a second from Commissioner Caban?
You got Minor.
Oh, Minor made the second. Is that
If the friendly amendment is accepted, I will rescind my second.
Okay, so the friendly amendment is
Point, point, so Commissioner Minor, so you want to wait to the end of this agreement, what you're saying, to start transitioning assets, to look at the dollar amount, to make sure that the city is going to transition the assets to the county? That's what the motion is. So what you're saying is, we're not going to know if the city is going to transition the assets to the end of the agreement. So what I'm saying is for the county attorney to work with this, to see, to start working on the process of the transition of assets and ask for an inventory schedule, otherwise, at the end of this agreement, we, I mean, we have to have this infrastructure.
Matt, Mr. Chairman? No, I'm not saying that at all. I think the friendly amendment is premature. I think we have, and I'll ask the county attorney, county administrator for this question. This, the friendly amendment that's been described is not required to be done now. Is that correct? When, just answer that question first.
This would be upon termination of the agreement, these things would happen. It's not a matter of if they happen. These things do happen based on a depreciation schedule. So you're giving me the authorization to proceed with an exhaustive analysis of your alternatives. This would be included in that. If the board wants that sooner, this will be a long-term thing. If you want that information earlier, our analysis would include this information because it's going to consider all of the alternatives. But if you want that information sooner, then maybe it would come out through the process, then certainly we could, we could do that. But this would be included in that process.
So this would be included in, meaning that in your evaluation, you would be seeking and communicating with the city that they're going to transition the assets and they plan and intend to transition the assets?
Yes, we would be evaluating this, we would be providing estimates to the board on what these things would cost, ultimately, what the impact of all of this would be, certainly, because some, some alternatives, again, may include, you know, again, the termination of this agreement, some might include the continuation or some other revised agreements, but yes, we would begin working on this through the process.
Okay.
But if you wanted to put a timeline on that, where when it would come back to you, we could do that.
Okay, so just to clarify on the friendly amendment, this is basically getting the, starting the process but not executing the sales, not executing the transactions.
Correct. My, if I may elaborate?
Yes, go ahead.
Right now, we are currently in a disagreement over terms of this contract, okay? My fear is that as we go to the end of this contract, when it comes time to divide up the assets, if there is a disagreement, the city currently owns these and they may withhold transferring these to us. At that point, we are in trouble because we have to provide fire, correct? So what I'm saying, this is the infrastructure, per our agreement, to provide service. So I would rather know sooner than later if they intend to say, yeah, this is correct, we're gonna transfer these to you, or they're gonna say, no, we disagree. At that point, we need to know now so that our Madam Attorney has the ability to litigate that. That's my premise of
Okay.
The friendly amendment.
So just to be, just to be crystal clear, you're not, the friendly amendment is not initiating the sale of these stations? Okay, that's fine. I'll support the friendly amendment.
Okay, so let's get back in order, commissioners. We've got a motion to the county administrator's recommendation with a friendly amendment. I, let me just hop in here and say, I like that idea because I want to be able to go to my constituents and say, oh, by the way, so I would prefer we get that information back as soon as possible, not necessarily waiting how long it might take for the analysis to get to that information, because I want to be able to reassure my constituents that this is in fact true, that these stations have to be sold back to the county and all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, I mean, in that sense, we just got confirmation that that's the case.
On point, though.
Okay, Commissioner Maddox, on point, and then we're gonna go to Commissioner O'Keefe and then Commissioner Proctor.
Can they say no?
Can who say that?
The city.
Well, they did breach your agreement, but, so I would say no, but I can't predict what the city will say or what position
Well, no, okay, don't get me wrong. I know they can, they can say no, but it's up there in black and white. We're asking for the cost estimate of what it would cost to transfer that property back to us?
So what Commissioner Caban asked me about in the briefing related to this, the fire station pieces seem on their face to be pretty definitive, but what value are they gonna put on fire station 15? We don't know. It would be good to know that, right?
So we're asking about, oh, 15, okay, gotcha.
So, and we don't know what their inventory looks like for firefighting apparatus and vehicles for fire stations 10 through 14, et cetera, et cetera. It would be good to have that information as you're planning if there is in fact a transition, a transfer of assets, to get that information. That is, I think, what was at the heart of what Commissioner Caban was proposing that we do is validate what they think would transfer in assets and then see if we agree, so that if we don't, we can resolve those disputes sooner rather than later in the process.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Commissioner O'Keefe, you are up, and then followed by Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, you can direct this wherever you need to. Is this information already going to be considered by a consultant that we're giving you permission to do, to analyze all the options and all the possibilities?
Yes, it will. However, we've got no problem, again, with, with, yeah, and, you know, and I don't want to say clarifying with the city specifically and early upfront what their valuation numbers are, we've got no problem doing that. Again, this would be included in that analysis, but we would also be receptive to this direction to get that sort of clarified early on in the process.
And is this information news to you or you're well aware of this?
I wrote this.
I thought so.
Thank you.
I thought so. That's one of the questions I asked, I knew the answer. And I appreciate Commissioner Caban bringing this up because it brings to the public's attention that this is not such a dire situation where we're going on the Amazon of fire stations and having to, to do that. However, the reason I won't support the motion with the added stuff is because my concern is that we're in a dispute, and now we're in a series of disputes, and we're in what we hope is a negotiation period over the next three years with some level of outcome that could be as hopeful as we're able to ink a similar agreement into the future or as disastrous or more difficult as we're standing up a standalone fire system, all of which I trust our county commission can do in a way that supports a current or higher level of service to our residents, but those are all outcomes. And I'm not a fan of trying to take all the future disagreements that we'd work through and pull them all to right now and say, let's find out everywhere where we disagree and are gonna fight over the next three years and do it now. I don't think that's, I don't think that's how a good negoti- I don't think that's, I don't think that's how good negotiations work, and I don't think that helps us get to a resolution on what we're looking at now. And so I, I'm not going to support this because I don't, I'd rather just get the information that says, here's what we're supposed to get, which is in the contract, and I don't think we need to go ask the city, hey, are you going to honor your agreement three years from now? I think that's going to be part of the process, and I just don't think we as a commission need to insert ourselves at this level of detail at this time. I trust that it's, it's in the works with our county administrator and our county attorney, and I would never want to be on the other side of the negotiating or court or arbitrator table up opposite them. And I just, I'm getting to the level where this is over-managing letting them do the process and, and risking whatever collegiality the county administrator can still do. I can't believe I said collegiality. That's really not my thing. Just, I think we're really stepping into the process more so than we need to, and I don't like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, followed by Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The city, the city, the city, the city. Will the city, the de facto city and the three commissioners allow all of the citizens of this community to vote on the fate of the hospital? Will the city, those three people, let us vote on whether or not we want TMH to go? Who is the city? It's three people, okay? That's what we're talking about. Now, counsel, when it comes to those three people who ultimately determine the city, I ask on the piece of paper, does 1D, do you read 1, or rather, D1 conjunctively, and it sets the context of 2A and 2B? I'm curious about that, and I think that until I'm clear about D1, is it independent of 2A and B?
I read D1 as independent of 2A and B simply because D1 is, is limited. It's very limited. It's predicated upon certain equipment and medical supplies provided by the county or purchased by the city solely with funding provided by the county reverting to the county, as is no warranty, everything else. So that's a different category of property than you're dealing with under 2A or 2B. Those are very specifically related to Fire Stations 10 through 14, Fire Station 15, and then from a firefighting apparatus and vehicle perspective, Stations 10 through 14.
Very good. I'm, I'm trying to understand the potency of 2A and B, and that if in fact the rug is snatched from under our feet to indicate that Fire Stations 10 through 14 were not purchased by the county nor were they purchased through the city with county money, that therefore we're a no and there is no merits to 2A and B.
Again, I read D1 as applying to a different category of property than D2A and B.
Good, good. Then I think that we have a very, it's not a question of, this is a question that the, the pin is already pulled from the grenade. It's live. This is nothing to really negotiate. It's already contracted. It's a provision. And so we look forward to those four stations for, I mean, and if you consider that 18-hole golf course is about 1.1, one something of a million, $1 million, and certainly this is, this is, we paying way more for these four stations at $500,000 than people who may get a deal for $1 million for 18-hole and almost 200 acres worth of dirt. So, yeah. All right. Ms. Chairman, I'm ready to vote for this, and let's do the right thing and support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Cummings, followed by Commissioner Minor and the vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a major problem, Commissioner Caban, and I thank you for putting this on the screen, but this is part of, part of the agreement. I think it's prudent for us to have that information at some point, but, but I just feel like it's an integral part of what the county administrator is going to bring back, you know, is going to bring back to us at, at any rate with some, at some point, and I'm not sure that we need a motion for that. Mr. County Administrator, this is integral part of what, no, it goes along with the motion for authority to, what, do solicitation and what have you. This is integral part of what you would ultimately bring back to us anyway.
It would be, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it would be part of what we would do for sure. You would have, again, all of these issues dealt with in the analysis, but if it provides the, the board more comfort, clarifying very early on in the process what the value of these assets are and that sort of thing, we'd have no problem receiving that direction and doing that.
Right, right. But do we need a separate motion for, for that to, to come back? Because that's part of what you were going to do anyway.
Well, I think it was, I think it was authorized in the county attorney to, to start in that process too. So again, if, if, if that, if that clarification was desirable by the board, we'd be happy to accept it.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very quick. Commissioner Caban, thank you for explaining the friendly amendment in some more detail. I'll, I'll support the motion with the friendly amendment. My point, when I didn't quite understand the full intent of the friendly amendment, it's, I just want to say it's, it's premature to initiate the transfer of the properties, which is what I, I misunderstood you saying, but it's clearly that we're not doing that. So I support the motion on the floor and the friendly amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Caban, you want to close us out?
Thank you. I, I do want to just clarify again that the spirit of the motion is not to, is not for, to be redundant, but what the county administrator is doing. What I would like to do is seek, have the attorney seek clarification that there's an understanding with the city that these are going to be transferred to us on that because right now, it's too, it's too risky for us to wait to the end of the agreement and then say, no, we interpret this differently. That's, that was the, so we're on the same page. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Passes unanimously. Anything else, Mr. Administrator?
No.
All right. We're into Commissioner discussion time. We'll just take it as it comes. Anybody want to go first?
Ms. Chairman, I counted the rule.
Commissioner Proctor, let's get, let Commissioner Maddox go first. He jumped you there.
Great meeting, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I've shared with you a letter addressed directly to you, suggests that let the voters decide whether Leon County should operate fire services. I'd like to see this matter sent to our new committee, and I've stated to you reasons, 10 of them, of why my confidence is solid that Leon County is capable and well able to sustain, support, coordinate the services of fire through professionals. I've also indicated in this letter to you that during the time which I held a town hall meeting last year, Commissioner Welch's district, at the Host Livery, it was a standing room only of people from across the community who were very disheartened. The morale of those who worked as fire workers for the city is quite, quite shattered. And I do believe that a strong point in our consideration of accepting the idea that the county do its own fire services, I do believe that what is probably one of the stronger merits is that the firefighters would likely prefer working the atmosphere, the ambiance of Leon County. We are not an employer that bullies our employees. We're not a county that would take three years to negotiate a contract for, we're just not that county that has great consternation with any segment of pocket of workers. And I don't think that we're a county that would stiff and make difficult the occupation of those who did not support us or Commissioner. And for those multiple reasons of high morale, the stableness of what our county represents, all of those are factors with which I'm excited to offer you this letter and ask your support of this being among and going with item four, number four. And so I offer this as a motion that we let the consideration of, of the county and fire service let them gnaw on the bone. Should we give voters consideration in 2026? Our agreement ends in 2028. We got four fire stations for $525,000, it's a good start, and maybe by 2029, we'll be ready, ready to launch Leon County's fire services. I've indicated to you in this letter that Leon County operates emergency management. You're familiar, outstanding job, award-winning. I've indicated to you in this letter that we do recovery, we do rescue, we do storm aftermath, lots of reasons here. And I also share with you probably one of the more outstanding features of why we can be excited is that our county is led by one of the nation's outstanding county administrators who, in my years of observing him, has never dropped a ball or failed at any challenge that he's been faced with. And some of those challenges were certainly not encouraged by the board, but such as the EMS, the baby left on the doorstep, and he picked that baby up, nurtured that baby, and that baby is an award-winning. I see you over there, chief. How you doing tonight? Chief is smiling. He has a smile wrapped around the back of his head. He's smiling. And, but he knows true, that it, it may sound, but I'm telling you nothing but the facts. We have taken every challenge, and there is nothing that the city is pointing out that is intimidating, that's going to leave us flustered. This is just an opportunity for us to take fire services to a higher level. And if you gave this to the union of talented firefighters, would you work for the county as your employer, or would you rather be with the city? I stand up on all the money in Caban's back pocket that they would vote for the county. That's what I'm telling you. So I'm asking your support of this, that it continues in the spirit of the thrust of everything the board is moving forward. So that's my motion.
Madam Attorney, is this in the right posture?
If the board directs this matter to go to the CCRC for consideration, it is something that legal analysis would have to be provided to the CCRC to determine what would be permissible in a charter related to taking over the Fire Services Department, which is the city's fire department.
Would it be more appropriate to have it come back as an agenda item first and then consider sending it to the CRC?
I mean, that, that would, that would give this body more information to go on beforehand, either way. I mean, a legal analysis is going to have to be conducted.
Commissioner Proctor, personally, I would feel more comfortable seeing some analysis on it before we send it to the CRC. I don't think there's a hurry.
I could withdraw my motion, reshape it in the spirit and context of county's attorney that we look at this as an agenda item.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're in the queue to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What concerns me about this is that it takes the position, and here in the letter recommending that we end the fire service agreement in 2028, including the current contract. I don't think that's a smart legal move because we are currently in a dispute process directing our county attorney to defend that same agreement that is allowing us to keep rates flat and that we are hoping to defend when it comes to buying and transferring assets. So I think anything that could be construed as us preemptively accepting, ending a contract we are defending is, is not a good idea. The other reason is I don't know that, that we could hold both governments to the outcome of a referendum. And so this seems like it's, so for not, this reason, I'm not comfortable moving forward this to start with. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Keefe, I, I think that analysis probably covered all that, but I hear you on that. I think there's some questions with the, the structure of it, but that's why I would rather see an item come back. So Commissioner Cummings, you're in the queue?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, so the motion is for an agenda item to come back?
Yes, ma'am. Just kind of analyzing.
On Commissioner Proctor's letter? Oh, okay. Because if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, the city has already given us notice that they're terminating the agreement. Am I, am I correct, Mr.?
But that's three years.
County Administrator, because we did get that letter.
Yes.
Saying that they've already told us that they are terminating it, correct?
Yes, but there's three years left, you know.
Right, right, right.
We're hopeful for an outcome.
And Commissioner Proctor says in, what, 2028? So we want to...
Well, he's correct that we are fighting this agreement.
Right. So we in that ADR process.
But it is scheduled to sunset in 2028 period.
So I, I agree, Mr. Chair. I think the best posture is for an agenda item to come back because there's a lot of discrepancy in here, and we need some clarification and direction, and I think the county attorney can provide that to us.
Perfect. Commissioner Maddox?
Ms. Chair, I, I can't support the motion on the floor. I, I understand the spirit of it, but analysis coming back, Madam Attorney, is whether it be, would it be suitable for us to send to the CRC for their review, us taking over fire services for the whole city and county? That's, that's what you're going to look at, correct? That's not, that's the...
That's not the agenda item.
That's the agenda item, so I'm very...
What I have is to bring back an agenda item of whether to have the CCRC consider whether to put fire department operation and management on the ballot, because that's with the verbiage that's used in this document. But if my understanding of what the motion is, is incorrect, please let me know, but that's what I understood the motion to be.
Right. I think that was the motion. Is, is, is fire services something, I guess this would be in the analysis. I, I don't, yeah, I'll vote against the motion on the floor. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a fire service analysis coming to us, which will provide the, the range of options that are available to the, the county on what to do. And so until I see that, I can't support the, the agenda item coming back. I, I want to, I want to see that analysis coming back outlining all of our different options. That should very clearly tell us which options are the, the best for us in serving the people in Leon County. And I, I want to see that document and read that through before I vote on something like this, even as an agenda item for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. I, I'll support the item just because I'm willing to see an analysis, but I am unlikely to support this item when it comes back. All right, Commissioners, we've got a motion from Commissioner Proctor and a second from Commissioner Caban. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we've got four yeses, three nos. I think that's right? Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Minor, and Commissioner Maddox in opposition. All right. Commissioner Proctor, you're still up for a fifth time, but please be...
I wanted to say to, publicly to say, because I've conveyed to the county administrator as well as to the county attorney how delighted and pleased that was to read the op-ed by our county administrator in Sunday's newspaper. In times of disarray, mayhem, and uncertainty in government at multiple levels, it was absolutely... absolutely good to read and garner a sense of stability and direction and vision. I thought that the 2025 annual report for the county was outstanding. And even though I probably said these same words last week about that report and looking glad about those pictures and that whole bunch of words, but those pictures captured the activity levels, the excellence, efficiency of our staff marshaling multitude of projects same time. And I think I was prouder on Sunday and realized that beyond last Tuesday, when initially we got, last Monday when we got the report, but to see it written in Sunday's paper and to take it all in, Vince, outstanding job. And then we saw that back page, you reported to the community, the annual report, which our government rightfully ought to share and put forth to the community, and it was transparency. You told the people, and I appreciated that. And then we had, which is a tradition, we had an employment section that the county is open for the best people to make effort to apply for a job. So at multiple levels, our efforts to receive the talent of the community, our doors are still open. I was excited. The report was way up there, and then the visual report of the, to the community, the annual report, was exceptional. So shouts out. I want you all, Commissioners, to know we ponder about Rick Minor sometimes here and there, once in a while, and then he ponders about me all the time, you know, and it's okay. But we shouldn't miss that we got great staff, administrator and attorney. Oftentimes, Commissioner Maddox, we don't know how good our running back is until you're looking in the rearview mirror, and that running back is not there. And next season, everybody talking about, we can't get a first out. Damn, wait, Nick, Nick, wait, Nick ain't here no more. God. You know, we miss people when they gone, and Vince, we gonna enjoy you while you're here. And then finally tonight, ladies and gentlemen, it gives my heart, great joy that I received a telephone call about 10:45 yesterday morning. A young lady I know something about, whose name is Haley Proctor, called her daddy and said that she had taken, she had passed a Florida bar. So I was all shook up and disturbed, and it was a beautiful thing. And so tomorrow evening, shouts out to Florida AM, whose passage rate was 76% on bar passage. Florida State's passage was, great, 88%, way up there, 92 or something. And both our universities did very good at the bar this year. So those things being said, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your leadership and your running of the meeting, your patience with, I mean, me and you got more patience with these guys. I mean, we think alike, Ms. Chairman, and we both are very patient with these jokers. And I appreciate you holding on the end of the days now, and I'm trying to keep them from running wild on this side. And we just, Commissioner Cummings, why you looking at me in that tone of voice? I'm through. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioners, before we move on to the next commissioner, I wanted to ask if there's anybody in the audience that want to speak on non-agenda items, since this is a normal meeting. Do we have any speakers?
We have new speaker cards.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Cummings, you want to go next on commissioner time?
Mr. Chair, I don't have anything. Great meeting. Congratulations, Commissioner Proctor, on your daughter, so we've got another member of the bar. I don't have anything. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Commissioner Minor, you want to go?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really quickly, you may have seen this advertised already, but the Tallahassee-Leon County Planning Department is hosting a series of public engagement meetings on the comp plan. And as you all may know, the comprehensive plan for Leon County and Tallahassee is done jointly together. That basically is a plan on how this community is going to grow and where it's going to grow over the next 25 years. The first one, the first community meeting is going to be held this Thursday, September 25th, at 5:30 at the Lake Jackson Community Center. I encourage, if you've got the time and ability to go, please go. There'll be discussions about the urban services area, which is the boundary where infrastructure is committed. There'll be discussions about land use, very important discussions, a little wonky, I understand, but very important for the future of the community. So if you have a chance to go to the one on Thursday, please go. If you can't attend the one on Thursday, please take a look at our Leon County website because they'll have the dates of the other meetings taking place in other parts of the county. And then the other thing is, you've got Haley Proctor?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations on passing the bar. I've got two daughters in the back who have access to a box of cupcakes, and they've already eaten six so far, from what I understand. So I got to get back there and put the kibosh on that. But, Mr. Chairman, thanks for running a great meeting. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. They are good cupcakes. I hope they save some. Commissioner O'Keefe, you want to go for it?
It's funny, Commissioner Minor, I got a note in crayon that says, please talk longer. I don't have anything. I just want to, I appreciate everybody up here. It is, what's better than having the best county administrator in the world is being the best commission in Leon County?
Oh, my goodness. That was, that was something, now. Commissioner Maddox, you going to go one more time?
Thank you. That was pretty slick. There's only one commission in Leon County. That's pretty dope. I wanted to bring out a point. First of all, I said it earlier, but, Mr. Chairman, great meeting.
Thank you.
I wanted to point out something to our constituents and those who watch our meetings and to this board. I will say that the past couple of meetings, we have fought like cats and dogs, made points, been passionate about those points, but yet and still, there's a sense of collegiality amongst the board and friendship that I appreciate. I want you guys to know I value each and every one of you, your opinions and what you believe in, and I like the way we do business at Leon County. And I'm hoping that as we continue to serve together, that we'll always do business this way. But, you know, it's just, to me, I think it's a point to be made, the passion in our conversations and even the way we speak to each other in passion, there's still a sense of respect that happens between each one of us, and that needs to be noted. And I wouldn't be a part of any other commission besides this one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and I second everything you said. Mr. Vice Chair, you want to take a shout at it?
You know, Commissioner Maddox, someone could say that we're the adults in the room, but I don't know. No, I really, I want to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Maddox, and appreciate all you, and I know that we're all just trying to do the best to represent our districts and community and neighbors. And I also want to give a big shout out to the chairman. I think that we've had a tremendous leadership from our chairman, particularly on this fire services fee issue. I think that he's held us all to a collegial standard. I really appreciated the op-ed in the paper too, laying out the timeline, and I heard a tremendous amount of positive feedback about that, and I do think we owe it to our chairman as how he's conducted these meetings, not only this year, but over the last few months as well, so.
That's true. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you all. I love our board, and I love our government, and I love our staff and the way we do things, and I really appreciate everybody's collegiality and bearing with me as I kind of wink at you to wrap it up. But I just have one quick proclamation, not ironically, I would like to ask someone to request a proclamation that we recognize our volunteer firefighters and volunteer fire departments at the upcoming fire truck roundup.
I like the timing of that. Yes.
We've got a motion from Commissioner O'Keefe and a second from anybody, Mr. Cummings. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners, and we will see you all in October, and thank you for a good meeting. We're adjourned.
Right, so you can use a weather report, a to-do list, a public service announcement, a police report, blah, 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 a set of dictionary, whatever, to tell your story or to tell Huck...